My apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the faithful, liberty and justice for all.
Judy is absent, sick tonight, so I'll do what I can to fill in. I think I'll ask myself to read the minutes from the last time. Selectment meeting minutes, Monday, November 5th, 2018, Town Office, 5:00 P.M. Present were Shirley Humphrey, Hadley Bueker, and Judy Elton; staff, Chris Littlefield, the town manager, and several citizens. Item number one, minutes of the previous meetings. Hadley read minutes allowed for October 15th, 2018, and motion to accept those minutes as Red voted 3-0 to accept. Under item two, public forum, the question, "Did we put the feasibility study for the transfer station out to bid?" Chris answered, "No, we have it as an optional line item in a contract with TRC." Why was the DEP in town over the past few weeks? Once for an annual O&amp;M training on the landfill, excuse me, and the other was to review historical data related to the landfill and water testing on Route 23. Bill presented to the town from Martin Street for rat infestation at a residence. Selectment said we couldn't pay for that type of problem for an individual resident insists rats are coming from the landfill. Under item three, we had unfinished business. We shared the letter from the code enforcement officer regarding rats. Pro views said the CEO just drove in and out and didn't have time to assess anything. And happy to go to the property and look at trash, we signed the annex lease. Item four, under new business, Eric Tuttle to write a proposal and schedule on process to improve the website for free. Chris updated the selectmen on the solar conference, signed an abatement map to lot 53, a tear down, $24.86. And we signed a poll permit for CMP and TDS. Item five was other. Do we have plan for wood debris at the transfer station? Chris said, "Not yet." Who was shooting the gazebo? And it was Dave Kimball. We signed our warrants and respectfully submit Chris Littlefield, town manager.
Did you want to accept as red?
Second, those in favor. Opposed, it's a vote. Public forum.
I have something, I don't know. The group, the heat group, has a request for the selectmen. We made a, we did a letter for each of you and a copy for Chris. It's kind of long, so take your time to review it, but we really would like to have a response by December 7th.
Thank you for letting us have time to review that. Certainly would be a good thing to do one evening, so.
Right, for sure.
Item number three, unfinished business.
I thought maybe somebody else, did you have something?
I didn't see any other hand, oh, go ahead.
I've been talking with Judith and I, Michelle Cole. Chris has been left several messages. First week in October, I complained about the garbage, the trash, the cow. Nothing happened, nothing happened. I call Al and he has been very rude and I've had him on speakerphone, so it wasn't just me that was taking it that way. Well, I called Judith, I haven't heard anything. Because I talked to Alan, he said he never heard of an ordinance. He didn't know there was a selectmen's meeting, he didn't know there was an ordinance that was to be written and voted on. So, I got ticked and I called Judy and she says, "Well, we were under the assumption, because it was grandfathered in, that you didn't want the ordinance written." He now has pigs. And that waste is equal to human waste and it is 12 feet from my flipping house. It is living in a box. The cow's now chewing the fence. We went out to throw wood in, it's like six feet from our wood pile. My son started ticking, he has Tourette's. Strong smells make it worse. So now I'm only dealing with that, I'm dealing with my son can't go out and play because he starts ticking so bad he can't see. And I keep getting told, "Deal with it." We looked at a realtor, she came over, she goes, "You can't get the $66,000 you need to get out from underneath your bone." We can't move, we can't get, look at this. I mean, I've been put in the hospital because it's so friggin infuriating that I pay my taxes while someone makes a living dump. I got pictures of crows taking garbage and dropping it and I'm peeling Saran Wrap out of my dog's butt because of their garbage. I don't understand how this can be let go, I don't. And now I got a pig because it was assumed that because it was grandfathered in, it was no big deal.
What did you mean by grandfathered in?
I was told by Judy, the first meeting I came to in October, that even if an ordinance was approved, and the ordinance that I want instilled is if your neighbor's okay with it and willing to sign a letter, go for it. Put it in the people's hands, but protect people like me. That I have no choice. He has a whole nother side of the property where no one lives. He point-blank told me he would not put it there because he doesn't want to smell it. We are, we get his downwind. I opened up my kitchen today and I smelled nothing but ran city urine. Does anyone here want to live like that? Really, honestly?
We don't, we don't live with that.
You know.
The ordinance, the ordinance process requires, but it's a town meeting process. It goes through a public vote and it's done by legislative board, which is a town meeting process.
The state, Maine State Animal Welfare says it can be rushed and they said it's actually neglect that the process hasn't even been started after a complaint with me.
Well, wait a minute, you're assuming the process hasn't been started. We've collected data.
Al said he hasn't never heard of it.
Al doesn't prepare it.
He told me that he didn't know anything about ordinance.
He doesn't because it hasn't been discussed with him.
And Judith herself said that it wasn't going to be written because they thought, this is from Judith. She said that it was dropped because it was grandfathered in and they didn't think I would have an animal. He plans on getting more animals.
Well, the process.
I don't think it was dropped.
And you know, you have a bull in a pallet fence that he's chewing through on school property where kids go by. Do you know how dangerous that can be? That thing is not touched. I've seen it headbutt their daughter.
I can just tell you that it wasn't dropped, that was an error. Unfortunately, that was an error.
We actually have collected data from other towns on ordinances, last week, right? Today is Monday, yeah, last week. We have, they're in on my desk. It's a process to put together. We have to put it together and then we have to have a town meeting.
The thing that I'm not comprehending is it doesn't need to be complicated. You can leave it to personal individuals, it doesn't need to be, you can't have chickens, you can't have guinea pigs, you can't have all this. Leave it to a neighbor's thing. But now he's going to collect more and more and more and more why my kids can't go outside because he starts ticking so bad. I don't understand how he can just do this. The trash?
Because there's no law against it.
But the town can do something.
They can do something and we're working on it.
You can say, "Hey, no more animals until this is settled." Now he keeps collecting because he knows they're grandfathered in.
Are you sure there wasn't an ordinance because?
I heard there was.
I was talking to my husband last night about this. And he says that he remembers when we got our turkeys, that he had to go ask Ralph and Molly if we could have turkeys. So there must be something written somewhere.
That's what Shirley was saying.
Not, well.
What I was told it might have been a fox.
It isn't in our ordinance book that we have or part of.
It was a courtesy thing and we submitted it to the town dip years ago that the neighbors had to sign off.
Right.
And it was a courtesy thing.
So if it was signed by town?
I don't think it actually was ever brought to a.
It's not a regulation or SOP or anything?
I don't think it was ever brought to a town meeting to verify. We had the back and dog ordinance, which didn't amount to too much either.
Well, could that apply with the mooing of the cow?
He was mooing, I've actually, I've been videotaping it for the ACO. He moved from 6:36 this morning and the last time I checked, it was 4:46 this afternoon. And it's not continuous, I mean, it's a break here and there. He has no food. I have to live that with a pig squealing, the smell, and we all know pigs defecate just like humans with all that waste. I can't sell because they say I won't get the money to do it, so what the hell am I supposed to do? And it's only going to get worse come spring, oh. It's going to get bad.
They in a shelter?
They actually lost power for a week, they just got it back. They have no running water because they have no heat. So yet, this is why, why they have the animal, I don't know. He's a wheeler and dealer.
We will try to accelerate this process for you. Is the animal in the shelter?
It's got a pallet roof and a tarp. And the pig's living in a crate, it is, up to its belly and waist.
Did you, did you get a chance to get ahold of Peter or anybody like that?
No, I'm working with Matt Randall from the state.
Thank you for bringing that attention to our attention again and we will accelerate as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Update on the Hartland Consolidated School.
Yeah, just was going to report that the heat is ongoing there. And we did receive the deed today, the deed has been sent to the attorney for review.
Hold up on the heat, was something to do with the molars over there?
Yeah, the, there was a circulator that was broke down. And then some issues with both the furnaces. In fact, one furnace is still operable. They're bringing more parts and they're collecting the parts. They should be in tomorrow or Wednesday to get the other one fired up, so that's the plan.
There were several, I'll bring this up, there were several questions along the way about the plowing over there. I had received a couple phone calls, one in particular. And just wanted everybody to know that we didn't have the deed, that, in fact, we have it right here. So for the town to put its crew on there would have been illegal, actually. So we did have Cal, from Cal's Way stepped up and went over and plowed it, so it would be safer over there, so. Hats off to Cal once again for stepping up. Update on the old town hall.
Yep, I just want to share the gentleman by the name of Steve Benner expressed some interest in some of the older wood, the chandelier light, some doors, some wainscoting. And ended up offering us another $1,500 for those items. And Susan documented the list and has received the money and.
That's who was up there with the trailer today?
Yep, he's up there taking some of this stuff out. So, we have been able to salvage some of that. Thankfully, somebody was interested in some of that wooden stuff, so just wanted to share that with you. No more of a solid plan with taking it down at this point. My intent is to get rid of all that, want to get back from downtown south.
Did he, he didn't take any windows yet, right? But he did, he's going to get windows, right?
He's going to take all the windows that weren't marked, he was interested in all of the windows.
But none of them been removed?
None of them been removed that I'm aware of. He asked if it was okay to, and I said yes. The only thing that I did not want him to do was take out the ones, if he took them out on the first floors, I wanted him to cover it with plywood so that people couldn't get in the upstairs ones. We've got water damage throughout the building anyway, it isn't really going to change anything.
Under new business, 2019.
Excuse me, you haven't finished all business yet.
I don't see anything else on the agenda, did you put that on the agenda?
I thought it was a continuation of, from last meeting. I was supposed to submit the proposal, I believe, at this meeting. I could, I had it ready for Monday, but.
Did you call ahead to?
I didn't have your email address, no, I didn't call ahead.
Can we put it on the other?
The only thing I would request, this is all business, all I need to do is distribute this and people can hear with their consideration and, you know, as the board's consideration. That's the only thing I'm requesting at this point in time.
Okay, so we will do what we can on the other when we get there, that's what we do. What is it?
Yes, the proposal I made last week, our last select board meeting. There's enough for, I think, all the two people here now.
2019 health insurance rates.
Yep. As you know, each year we get a slight increase in, this year, our rate, the contribution rate has been 9.57 this year per month, $957. The request to the board this year is to increase that to 9.9524 per person, excuse me, per month, per person. It's a change of approximately $3,300 a year for the folks that are insured under our program.
How many people?
Seven, is it that? Seven.
So that's each person, so that's $7,000 or something?
No, the total increase is $3,300.
Oh, okay.
To cover everybody. If we increase to nine, it's 9.9524 is the figure.
Any better coverage, same coverage?
Same coverage.
Same coverage.
No changes on the total, same.
Yes.
You have a shop around different agencies and stuff like that to compare versus or anything?
No, we belong to MMA, insurance side of that.
And take advantage of the rates because the whole group is in there?
They are usually cheaper.
Do you need us to take action on that or is it just?
I'd like a motion to lay down it.
Second, those in favor. Take care of that.
Thank you.
Holiday schedule for the town office?
Yep. 24th and the 31st this year on Mondays. And the, one thing we're unsure about is if the state's going to be open. We tried to find out before this meeting and unsuccessful. Last year, they shut down the day before just at the last minute. And again, it just shuts us off from doing motor vehicle transactions and stuff like that. So I was going to request that we shut down for those two days and give the employees a long weekend.
I make a motion that we do so?
Second, those in favor.
That's Christmas and New Year's, right?
Yes. Thank you.
We have an audit to review?
Yep.
Did you get it in your email?
Yeah, we sent it to you by email.
I didn't make copies because I figured that you reviewed it already. Do you want me to go make you a copy?
Yeah.
I have it on email, I can look it through.
Yeah.
Okay. So you did get the email?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
It came out very good as a rule, there was, there was, what, you said a couple of words that you.
There was some verbiage, yeah, there was some verbiage changes that we had to make. And even still, on this, this final draft right here, the address is still incorrect. They still give us that 21 Academy Street, they sent a text on that again this afternoon, so. And asked if they please change that. Susan and I both reviewed all the numbers fairly thoroughly and feel pretty confident with that 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 correct for this year. Mindy was quite happy with it all, so.
And this is the audit that we posted in the town report?
Yeah, yeah. This is what we use for all our grants, all of our town report.
Yes.
We have to send it to Main Bond Bank, all the funding agents get a copy of it once it's finalized. I can read some highlights here if you want to, off this.
Yeah.
Off this.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the bottom line.
Yep. Yep, I'm going to start with the information provided because the first part is all about what she's providing us up to 10. This is information provides, we provide you with access. This is stating that we've provided her with all the access to information of which we are aware as relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements such as records, documentation of the matters, additional information that you have requested from us for the purpose of the audit, unrestricted access to persons within the town of Hartland from whom you determined it necessary to obtain audit evidence, minutes of the meetings of the Board of Selectmen, and summaries of actions of recent meetings which minutes have not yet been prepared. All material transactions have been recorded in accounting records and are reflected in the financial statements. We have disclosed to you that the results of our assessment of the risk that the financial statements may be materially misstated as a result of fraud. We have no knowledge of any fraud or suspected fraud that affects the town of Hartland involves management, employees who have significant roles in internal control or others where fraud could have a material effect on the financial statements. We have no knowledge of any allegations of fraud or suspected fraud affecting the town's financial statements communicated by employees, former employees, regulators, and others. We have no knowledge of instances of noncompliance or suspected noncompliance with provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, or grant agreements or abuse whose effects should be considered when preparing financial statements. We have disclosed to you all known actual possible litigation claims and assessments whose effects should be considered when preparing the financial statements. We have disclosed to you that the identity of the town's related parties and all the related party relationships and transactions which we are aware. Government specific, there are no communications from regulatory agencies concerning noncompliance with or deficiency in financial reporting. We have taken timely and appropriate steps to remedy fraud, noncompliance with provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements or abuse that have been reported to us were not applicable. The town has no plans or intentions that may materially affect the carrying value or classification of assets, liabilities, or equity. We are responsible for compliance with laws, regulations, and provisions, contracts, and grant agreements applicable to us. We have identified and disclosed to you all instances that have occurred or are likely to have occurred of fraud and noncompliance with provision of laws and regulations that we believe have material effect on the financial statements and other financial data significant to the audit objectives and any other instances that warrant the attention of those charged with governance. We have identified and disclosed to you all instances which have occurred or are likely to have occurred of noncompliance with provision of contracts and grant agreements that we believe have a material effect on the determination of financial statement amounts or other financial data significant to the audit objectives. We have identified and disclosed to you all instances that have occurred or are likely to have occurred of abuse that could be quantitatively or qualitatively material to the financial statements or other financial data. There are no violations or possible violations of budget ordinances, laws, or regulations, provisions of contracts, or grant agreements, tax, or debt limits, or any related debt covenants whose effects should be considered for disclosure in financial statements or as a basis for recording a loss contingency or for recording noncompliance. As a part of your audit, you assisted with preparation of financial statements and related notes. We acknowledge our responsibility as it relates to those non-audit services including that we assume all management responsibilities oversee the services by designating an individual, preferably with senior management who possesses suitable skill, knowledge, and experience, evaluate the adequacy and the results of the services performed, and accept responsibility for the results of those services. We have reviewed, approved, and accepted responsibility for those financial statements and related notes. The town has satisfactory title to all owned assets and there are no liens or encumbrances on such assets nor any assets been pledged as collateral. The town has complied with all aspects of contractual agreements that would have material effect on the financial statements in the event of noncompliance. The financial statements properly classify all funds and activities according to GASB Statement Number 34. All funds that meet the quantitative criteria of GASBS Number 34 and 37 for presentation as major are identified and presented as such. On all other funds that are presented as major are particularly important to the financial statement users. Components of net position, net investment and capital assets restricted and unrestricted and classifications of fund balance, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned are properly classified and if applicable, approved. Investments, land, and other real estate held by endowments are properly valued. Provisions for uncollectible receivables have been properly identified and recorded. Expenses have been appropriately classified in or allocated to functions and programs and the statement of activities and allocations have been made on all reasonable base, on a reasonable basis. Revenues are appropriately classified in the statement of activities, between program revenues, general revenues, contributions to term of permanent endowments, or contributions to permanent fund principal. Inter-fund, internal entity activity and balances have been appropriately classified and reported. Deposits and investments are properly classified as to the risk and are appropriately disclosed. Capital assets, including infrastructure and intangible assets, are properly capitalized, reported, and if applicable, depreciated. We have appropriately disclosed the town's policy regarding whether to first apply restricted or unrestricted resources when an expense is incurred for the purposes of which both restricted and unrestricted net position is available and have determined that net position is properly recognized under the policy. We are following our established accounting policy regarding which resources, that is restricted, committed, assigned, or unassigned, are considered to be spent first for expenditures which are more than one resource classification, which more than one resource classification is available. That policy determines the fund balance classifications for financial reporting purposes. We acknowledge our responsibility for the required supplementary information. The required supplementary information is measured and presented within prescribed guidelines and methods and, and the methods of measurement and presentation have not changed for no use in the prior period. We have disclosed to you any significant assumptions and interpretations under the measurement and presentation of the RSI. Non-banks, including instances of noncompliance have occurred subsequent to the balance sheet date and through the date of this letter that would require adjustment to or disclosure in the aforementioned financial statements. So that's what you're testing for.
So if you're giving it a grade, it would be A, I would guess?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no deficiencies. There was none identified that I picked up in the audit, so.
Yes, the standard letter that...
This is, yeah, this is all standard language. Uh, again, we reviewed the information to make sure that, uh, the numbers, uh, make sense and, uh, once in a while, the, uh, numbers, she's dealing with so much information here that sometimes it, for example, something might get into HPCF that should be landfill or vice versa and that's, that's an example of something that we double check and make sure is correct. It's, uh, appears to be in...
Well, I'm gonna take him to do that audit.
Oh, she works...
She spends two days here and then works at the office also.
I'm gonna guess she spends about a week on it, I'm gonna think, probably a week. I'm guessing on that, I'm not, I never actually asked her.
Takes a lot back to the office.
And then, I mean, Susan communicates for the majority of the time because she's the one doing the majority of the, uh, paperwork on me. So, you know, there, there could be a question. It's not uncommon to have a list of questions and we go back and forth and make sure we're all on the same page and that we understand each other and, uh, there was some notation in the report itself that was, the verbiage was incorrect, it was given the wrong description and I spoke to her about that to explain how we actually do it and what was actually happening and she changed that, so. That was the only thing that jumped out at me that was incorrect, so.
We're just gonna sign to the side, or?
Yeah, sign it, sign it up, I'm sure I can sign it on there. They only should have the space for two on usually, but go ahead and we'll sign all three. The next item here, I just, I brought this, this sort of notice, LMA, that, uh, I brought to you, so you can go ahead and read it and, uh, I'm not sure of the impact, it doesn't seem like that I already have the information. Has to do with the, uh, with some cable companies and sell antennas and so forth. Uh, there's, there's moving legislation for it, I'm just providing it as a, so you pass it.
You don't have to take any action on that, sorry.
No, just information.
Under other?
Let's do that. I don't have anything on that.
I have one thing, um, I've been asked by several people, who's actually doing the filing, you know? But what list of people do you have?
Uh, we have, uh, Bill Ramsdale, uh, Keith Badger, Kendall Davis, Jim Russ, Bruce Munn, Terry Hughes. That should be it, should be six of them, right? That's six, yeah. I might have had four.
Uh, you're up.
Okay, the filed documents is one for each of the selectmen and the town manager. The rest you can pass around. If there's any, there'd be three select people, right? Reserve one together. But you still reserve one for her to consider.
Guys, should I have one of those, Doc?
Look, he's back.
I can print more. This is the proposal that I made last slum board meeting. I've kind of got it into written form to give you an idea of what I'm trying to propose, uh, at the least expense, if not absolutely free, the best I can do. But, um, if you have any questions on this, please, you can contact me or bring them up under unfinished business next week. My view of this as being unfinished business since the document hadn't been passed in yet. It wasn't new business, you were well aware of it last we, last time you were there.
So would you, would you prefer us putting it on the, uh, agenda as a line item next time? So give us a chance to...
Until it's resolved and made a decision, it should be under all business until we've resolved it, yes.
Okay. I don't want a chance to read this all over.
Yep, and there will be questions, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Because technology...
Would you mind doing that, 'cause I, I really don't wanna sit here and read this right now, I'd rather put some time in.
No, you, you got time to read it, this, I'm not even suggesting to start it till the first of the year anyway. You have plenty of time to read it, I believe.
Well, I'm a slow reader.
It's all right, I can talk slower too, if needed. Like Ray Dalio, he's writing slow 'cause his mother doesn't read fast.
Thank you for putting the time into that, that's a lot of time and effort.
Well, I'm pretty well skilled at doing what I'm proposing. There might be other suggestions that people might want. Um, it's not an absolute, it's still a proposal, so.
To be honest, I'd prefer we did something like that in-house, but this is a heck of a, we should do that. This is a heck of a diagram to follow to...
Well, it can be done in-house if you wanna train the staff to do it.
That's what I'm saying, this is a heck of a...
That'll save on me, 'cause I might die anyway, never mind.
Hadley, I have one more thing when you get your chance. You're sitting back too, so you...
I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead with it.
Yes.
I just wanted something that seems to me to be contradictory action by the board. Um, last week Marie came in and had a bill for her, um, rat problem. Uh, she was almost in tears, or was in tears. And you guys said that you couldn't pay her bills, that she had to pay her own bills. However, you guys do do abatements and actually in December of two thousand seventeen, you did a sewer abatement for, I don't know exactly who it was, I do know that Hadley abstained on it. So, um, I'm just saying, it just seems contradicting, contradictory to me that you would give an abatement to someone but yet won't pay for this lady's bill for her rats, which...
Are becoming a huge issue.
Are becoming huge issue and...
We got them and we keep them.
It may or may not be, it may or may not be, uh, caused by the landfill, but it's a possibility that it is and I believe it actually sent on the bill that it was.
No, the sewer for sewer leaks, that would be the only reason.
With sewer leaks.
Right, well, and this, you're talking about two different processes.
Yeah.
An abatement is a part of the process, of the government process.
Right.
We don't pay for rodent infestation?
No.
I know, but a sewer is somebody's bill that they have to pay, it's not like a tax. It's a sewer bill.
That is assessed by the town.
It's what?
It's assessed by the town.
Right, right.
So, we don't, we don't assess bills for rodents. It's two different processes, it's, it's not, they're not relevant, you're talking apples and oranges.
Can I ask a question? Um, last year on the news, Hartland was focused on for rats. I've never had rats since I've been there in two thousand eleven. Other people in this town are having rat issues, landfill, and the trash around people's houses that aren't forced to take care of it. It's becoming a town issue. Actually, um, I think it's the, I don't know, it's one overlooking, it's becoming a problem nationwide. Have everyone seen the rat videos from Tractor Supply? I mean, there, there should, I understand normal rat and mouse damage, but when you get infested in your house that isn't full of trash, that's not okay either.
But it happens to people, it happens to people all the time. Municipal government doesn't pay for that.
But not making people clean up their garbage either is eating at it.
I would agree with that and we have a process for that and we follow that process. People have thirty days. If you got a trash problem and you leave it for thirty days, that's all, we, all, we can only ask them to clean it up. They have thirty days to clean it up.
It's been longer than thirty days and he still has trash out there.
He had, but when did he change it? We've checked it weekly.
I've got pictures...
Right.
Weekly...
Right.
Of crows digging trash. He's got it out between the trailer and the house, but you guys aren't allowed to look.
Or is it the same trash?
It's actually buried underneath his junk. He has trash buried underneath his junk, he hides it. He knows you guys come out on Mondays. He knows when the ordinance is here, people aren't stupid. Sorry, I didn't mean to sidetrack.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
I have a question. How many days does the dump close per week, the land transfer station, I should say?
What's that?
How many days a week is that closed?
It's open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right?
So it's closed three days a week?
Yes.
So, why couldn't there be put in place an ordinance that requires people to have their trash disposed of either by hauling it away by professional or taking it themselves once a week? Unless they're on vacation, whatever like that, but not to leave it outside of the roadside for the time they're on a vacation. There could be an ordinance for that, I know there are in other towns and cities. It's just taking the effort to do the work, to propose ordinances against such nuisances is what we need to do as a community.
Everybody away from this town because there's no fire here anymore. It's all, we gotta wait, we gotta wait. I remember growing up in this town and I used to love being here, going out on the streets. Now, this town's turning into trash, I'm sorry. You can't go out at night, you know, the houses walk around town. You're not gonna get anywhere, people. It takes effort, it takes, you know, going against the grime. And no one wants to do that anymore.
Okay, but that was my question, why can't we start developing ordinances that sort of protect the citizens, the children, and anybody that might wanna move into this community? I mean, the board is the initiating body if they so choose to. But if the people are driven to drafting a petition, then it'll be revisited upon the board, they can either accept or reject it. However, as a last resort, we have a right to call a notary republic to call a meeting in our behalf under state law. I've researched this for the last couple of years, I know what I'm talking about as far as that goes, but... My proposal is to start creating ordinances where there's nuisances. And protection of the town, community, the people, the children, the air, uh, water, everything. We're supposed to work towards protecting ourselves at minimum. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Anything else, I'm down.